I sort of like that background, but it might be a little distracting. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, Controller. Could you do you mind walking us through those? I apologize. I'm just trying to.
So the first question that we were asked was the amount that the Controller's office paid out of the 155 million from the Harper funds to pay down the unemployment trust fund? That was the first question and we sent over, they were, there were two vouchers that were processed in the amount of $125,000. One for $35,000 and one for $90,000, but the total is 125.
So I have a question on that, Senator Leser.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. Madam Controller, can you let us know which date those were paid?
So both were processed on the 22nd of February.
And they were for what amount?
The first voucher was for 35. I'm sorry, I said thousand, I meant million.
I know you meant million. I was gonna say something and I said, I do it all the time, so I can't say anything.
It's already been a long day. The first voucher was for 35 million and the second voucher was for 90 million.
So that would leave 30 million in there?
Correct, so 125, yes.
And do you have control over the 30 million?
In terms of it being paid out?
Yes.
Yes, in terms of it being paid out as the vouchers come in.
And where would the vouchers come from?
Um, Karen, I don't know who on my team can answer that question in terms of the administration. Is Carolyn on or?
Yes, Simone. The voucher, we actually, we actually allot the money to the Department of Labor and the Department of Labor has processed the vouchers. So they have the $30 million in their allotment to process.
And that was done on 2/22?
Correct.
Let me see. Apologize. How was it Tuesday? So one week ahead of time. Thank you for that. And because we still have 30 million that we put in to go to the unemployment trust fund. So we'll find out where that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank, thank you, Madam Real Chair. Other questions? I know there was a lot of conversation about the, about the partnership to point out plan and the infill, but I think you answered that. You answered it to my satisfaction in the hearing. I didn't know if, what, I, I don't have the documents that you submitted. So I don't know if you want to walk us through that or how you want to.
So that's, I can walk you through the questions. The second question had to do with the resident state trooper and the average cost for the unfunded pension liability. So depending on the salary step and the annual salary and the annual salaries for the resident state trooper, we are looking at anywhere from a range from 19,179 to 31,082 with a midpoint of about 22,000 in terms of the average cost for state trooper in the unfunded liability. Goes into a little bit more detail in terms of how that's figured out in the response that we provided to you. But just, you know, to answer the question, it's a range from about 19,000 to $31,000. And then the next question do with the SIR's hazardous duty rate. If it didn't include unfunded pension liability, the rate would be 26.90% for fiscal year 2022. If the unfunded pension liability was not factored in. And then the last question that we had gotten was the cost of a core CT pension module for the teachers retirement system. We've never costed that out in core, but if we, you know, we have to actually undergo the exercise to do it. But if we wanted to provide you a rough estimate, we're talking about five to 10 million dollars to implement the module. And obviously for an exact number, we have to, you know, do a deep dive into sort of what they needed and then what the cost would be. But those are the questions that we had, I believe, from OFA. I don't know if there were any additional questions.
Senator Austin.
Thank you for that. So on the resident state trooper, it's 19,000, say 20,000 to 31,000. All right, per, per trooper that the towns are paying for the unfunded liability?
Correct, depending on what their salary is, depending on the time range.
And most resident troopers have time on the job, so very few would be at the 19, 20,000 dollar range.
So the midpoint is about 22 in terms of what we factored in, 22,000.
And how many resident troopers are there?
Um, I don't have that number. Does anyone know exactly how many resident troopers we have?
Not at the top of our head. We can check with Department of Public Safety, Emergency Services and Public Protection.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And the, we've met with TRB the other day and they said they're required to go over to Core CT. Do you know when that requirement was made?
I'm not. Marty, do you have any idea?
Yeah, I, I think it might have been just last year. I'm not sure, Senator, but I can tell you when, when we, when we learned of the requirement, we did do, perform an exercise here to see how compatible the TRB system processes are with Core CT and our own pension module. And we were able to determine that we think it's, we think it was, it would work. The only thing we didn't do was because, that we didn't do, as Natalie said, as the Controller said, is we didn't do a deep dive on costs because we had not heard anything since.
So they said that their system is massively old. And, and if, I think it's good for us to get on Core CT. I think that that makes a lot of sense for TRB to be on Core CT. Because it, the data that Core CT can provide is much better than the system that they currently have. So you're saying that on the north side of the cost of this is about 10 million dollars? And that would be a soft, I just want to, I just want to know, is that a hardware update or a software update?
I, I, I just think it's an implementation update. I do not know what kind of software, what kind of hardware we need. And the software we would be using would be the same software that we're using in the SIR's pension module, but it would have to be modified, it's, you know, for some circumstances. And I just, I also want to add, you'll, you'll remember that this issue has come up multiple years, you know, bringing TRB, TRB to Core CT. And at every, at every year, it somehow got stopped somewhere in the process. So I think, you know, I think our thought, you know, even though it was in the, even though it was, you know, in the statute was we would do, we would do an implementation study to see if it fit and then wait for further instructions on whether or not to go ahead.
Okay, so it, by your initial review, it does fit? And by your initial review, it'd be about?
Five to 10. Angelo Romano, who's our Core CT director, is comfortable saying he thinks it'll be between five and 10 million dollars. But as, as the Controller said, we'd have to do a full scope of work on it. It would have to be done, you know, with help from the outside and that's where the cost would be. We, we'd need an integration vendor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Austin. I just had a question and I probably should have asked this earlier. We've seen a lot of focus this year on hospital consolidations and there is some literature out there that suggests that consolidations can raise prices by 16% on average. And I, I just, obviously there's, we have a whole other office of OHS that looks at it from one perspective. But I was wondering if this is an issue that the, the Controller's office had weighed in on or looked at in terms of increasing either employee or retiree healthcare costs.
Senator Leser, I'm going to have Joshua Ojik and Thomas Woodruff respond to that in terms of the cost.
Senator Leser, yeah, so we have been digging into it a little bit relative to our data. And we are seeing some increased costs in outpatient and inpatient claims. Those seem to be driven more by, you know, a price per service rather than increases in overall utilization. We are still digging down to identify whether or not that's been a shift in the types of services or if it's really a significant pricing issue. So still, still working through some of that, but we certainly have seen some, some changes over the last half year or so. Now, Tom, any, any other things, Stan?
No, I think the one issue is that we don't know whether delayed or deferred care might have resulted in more complicated procedures. So we're really digging down deep in the claims to make sure that it's really a price for the same service rather than a price increase because the services are more serious because they were delayed.
Thank you. And if there were a determination by your office, and I don't know, not a Controller, this is also from Tom and Josh. Are there tools that the Controller has for, I'm just thinking as the largest purchaser of healthcare? I would think that we, that the state is a, would have a vested interest in doing everything we can to keep prices down. So I'm just, you know, if it is a problem that's being exacerbated by consolidation, I'm just wondering if, in addition to OHS, if you might have a, or need a seat at the table. And I'm just trying to think through how that would work.
Yes, we're, we're in direct negotiations and discussions with a large number of provider groups throughout the state to negotiate with us a total cost of care contracts where they assume some degree of risk in the equation. And so that's our current strategy is to try to go directly to the providers for new contracting to perhaps avoid some of these pricing increases.
And with legislation, we've, we've been considering legislation to limit tiering or steering by hospital networks. Is that something that would enhance if, if it were to apply to the state as a purchaser? Is that something that would, would give you extra leverage and driving down prices? Is that something that would be helpful?
Josh, what do you think?
He, it's, there, there's some complexities to it, to be completely frank with you. So if the hospital system's in a total cost of care contract, they're trying to manage overall cost, they're going to say that they can better do that. If they, you know, are seeing the patient from, you know, from every angle. But at, at the same time, we know that some of those larger hospital groups today are, are higher cost. And so, you know, when we look at, you know, independent groups who may be, you know, utilizing a variety of hospitals for their referrals. When those get bought up and suddenly all of their referrals now start going to more expensive hospitals, that, that, that's going to drive additional costs. So it, it really depends on, on who we're talking about and what's happening in the marketplace. When the consolidation's already happened, the argument for, you know, for, for limiting that maybe is a little bit less, but before the consolidation happened, right? That's, that's what our, our opportunity where we can keep those, those independents independent and, and, and those folks, you know, can have relationships where they send care to the most efficient, highest quality locations. And, and that's something that, you know, we've tried to help identify for our plan members through our network of distinction program where we sort of identify the highest performing groups for various procedures and, and try to give incentives for, for members to, to go and, and utilize those locations.
And we're trying to leverage primary care. We have a big primary care initiative. And so we're trying to build the referrals from the bottom up rather than going to the hospital systems and expecting them to do it on their own. So that's something to look, look forward to this year. We're trying to enter into new contracts effective July 1 with an effective date of January 1 for start measuring the total cost of care management.
Great, thank you. Other questions from members of the subcommittee? Yes, Representative Walker, I didn't mean to ignore you.
No, that's okay. Good morning. I mean, good afternoon. See, I don't even know what day, what time of day it is anymore. Thank you for, for coming before us. And this, this discussion that you were having with Senator Leser made me also want to ask you, why didn't you not get involved in the DAS establishment, IT establishment? I noticed that you were not contributing or you were not giving up staff or anything like that.
Are you talking about the, the centralization of the IT staff?
Yes.
So the centralization of the IT staff really has to do with sort of like network support and desktop support. Core is different in terms of it being sort of the enterprise system for the state. When you talk about the HR and the financials that run through it, we have a team of almost 80 plus, Marty. People that run that system, it's a very specialized area. And so to move that entire enterprise system over to a centralized function, similar to what they're doing at DAS would be a disruption that, you know, it's nothing that any of us can afford when we talk about payroll and HR and our other financials that, that can be paid through. It's just a very different function than, than what they're centralizing HR for. And what they're centralizing IT for.
Just to add to that, we, the constitutional officers, I believe, are exempt from that as, as, as we are exempt from the HR consolidation.
Okay.
No, we're executive branch, but we're not really.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, I, I have some questions about the, the centralization in total. And I mean, what you said about the, the risk and also the specialization, that could also be said for some of the other agencies that seem to be merged, prepared to be merged into the system. I think Department of Transportation would be one of them and, and there are a couple of others that have very unique circumstances. So I was just trying to figure out how, how you guys got out of it. So thank you very much for your answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Walker. Any other questions for members of the subcommittee? If not, well, it's lovely to see you and your wonderful team, Controller. And we would, we're always happy to have you in front of appropriation. So good to see you and really appreciate you getting back to us. And I don't, I don't know, did you send that out to the, to the administrator? I just haven't, I had, just haven't, I'd love to track down a paper copy of the.
We'll make sure that you get one. I know it was sent out. I don't know exactly. I know OFA has a copy of it, but I'll make sure that, that the committee gets copies also.
Great, thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
And let us know if you have any additional questions for us.
Will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day, everyone.
Who's next?
DAS is up, Senator.
And are they, are they all in?
Most are. I think we're waiting on the Commissioner, I think. No, here she comes.
I want to make sure Representative Walker is ready with her questions about IT.
The Commissioner is in.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you.
Commissioner, is your team all here? Do you need, are you ready to go or do you need a couple of minutes?
I believe, I believe we are good to go. Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So good.
Now, I think we may not be able to hear you.
We are ready to go. Yep, we are ready to go. So thank you so much.
Commissioner, it's good to see you and your team. Do you have answers before we begin to some of the questions that were posed in the, either by OFA or in the, in the hearing?
So I apologize. My audio seems to be working. Can you hear me appropriately? Okay.
Right now, yes.
Great. So I apologize, Senator. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, no, thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to see, you know, we had asked some questions during the hearing and then I believe there were some questions submitted by OFA and just didn't know if you, if you had a, a response. You had answers ready for us or any kind of updates for us?
So in terms of our response. So I'm. So we have submitted several documents around our IT modernization to you and then also some follow-up documentation on the retirements that are taking place throughout the executive agencies. And then in terms of any follow-up questions, I'm not certain that the, that our office had received any specific additional questions from the committee, but we are happy to do so today. And then any follow-ups after that as well, certainly.
Well, thank you. I see that both Senator Austin and Representative Walker have their hands up. I think Representative Walker had her handed up first. So I will recognize her first and then Senator Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good, good afternoon, Commissioner. It's good to see you. How are you? I want to, I'll be good and do just two questions and then I'll come back and get in line again. So we all have a chance. But my first question is going to be about the HR consolidation that, that, that you were doing. First of all, can you tell me, how is that going? What were the, the glitches that you saw that needed to be fixed? And should we be looking at some things that need to be tweaked in that, in that consolidation?
Thank you so much for the question, Representative Walker. So in terms of the rollout of this program, just about two years ago, we've made significant progress in terms of moving ahead. I am going to ask Deputy Commissioner Herms to speak in large part to any continued issues that we have seen relative to the consolidation. By and large, in terms of retirements and then recruitment, which are certainly the, the two top issues that I, I think you and the legislature may be, you know, focused on, as is our team. We continue to see great progress, not only in terms of recruitment, where we're trending actually above where we have been in previous years. In large part due to the work of the, the centralization and having, you know, multiple staff working at, working across agencies and working as a team and eliminating some duplication and, and having a stronger approach and a more collaborative approach towards recruitment. And then when it comes to the retirement wave and the surge relative to that, similarly situated, we have numerous employees that are working towards helping and supporting our employees with the retirement process and making sure that they're making the appropriate choices, filing the right paperwork with our agency as they move forward into the next, you know, phase of their work lives or into retirement. But I think the centralization overall has really improved those processes and procedures as we've moved forward. But I do want to ask Nick to really weigh in here around some of the, the data that we've seen and some of the benefits that we've seen out of the consolidation. Nick?
Thanks, thanks, Michelle. Good afternoon, Representative. I would be hard pressed to list or to name for you glitches or problems that we would have to fix. Our metrics and a lot of the concepts that we've presented in November still hold true today. I mean, there are just, there have been numerous benefits to HR centralization. I honestly don't know if I can name something that I would even classify as a glitch at this point. So I, I mean, if there is a more specific question, I'm doing my very best to answer, but I can't name one.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Nick. But I will let you know that what I heard out there was that it took a long time to get applications turned around. Also, it was very difficult to get an understanding on the process and procedures and who was going to be taking care of those. And I, I mean, you know, whenever you consolidate, what is it, how many? About, about 200 people into one location. Quickly, I'm sure there's going to be glitches and there're going to be some that are very glaring and then there're going to be some that are, that are more subtle and you, you probably will, will, will understand and agree with that. So I'm not going to belabor it except for the fact that we are in a crisis crunch right now with the number of people that we have that are retiring. And when we see that and we see that there is a very slow return or turnaround in filling those positions, it, you can't help but feel the anxiety that all of us are having right now and trying to make sure that we provide the state of Connecticut with those services. So I will, I will leave that. But it did take, it took about two years or so for you to start to get in your stride, which, which is expected. So I'm going to go over to the, the DAS consolidation. My first part of that is, have you begun this consolidation already, Commissioner?
In terms of the, the HR consolidation?
No, the IT, the IT.
The, the IT optimization project did begin and it's scheduled in large part to complete, to be completed come June. And I can have our CIO.
No, no, that's okay. I just, I just wanted to know, did we authorize that last year? In, in, in statute?
Yes, and correct me if I'm wrong, was, I think it was statutory in large part due to some executive order guidance as well from, from the governor. But Mark, keep me honest here.
Yeah, good to see you, Representative Walker. The, there, there was no legislative change that, that enabled this process. We believe that the current statutes, the 4D statutes and the authorities of DAS would allow us to, to proceed. You know, we have executed many of the MOUs, but the, the process that we're going about this technology change is, is slowly and iteratively. And so while we've been operating under this ability, we, we have not changed much in way of agencies' processes and our, the part that needs legislative approval is, is the movement of personnel in budgets and none of that has occurred.
That's what I, that's what I thought. That's, the, the concept was laid out and it was presented, but it has not been authorized by the General Assembly, which was going to be my, my, my next comment was because of that, because of the the dollar amounts and the staffing, it's something that we have to be, the final, final authorization on that. So, and with that, I'm going to let my other colleagues, but if they don't ask any of the questions, I will be back. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. And I guess I would have to, I want to call on Senator Austin. But, you know, I guess this is a sort of a persistent issue that, that, you know, this committee has had with, you know, all sorts of executive branch agencies where, you know, the executive branch will propose something and we will weigh in or not, but by the time we, we do, it's already a. you know, the executive branch will propose something and we will weigh in or not, but by the time we do, it's already a fait accompli, you know, it's it's a little, I'm not, without weighing in on whether or not the IT consolidation is a good idea. If you're already doing it and you're going around the legislature, I guess, I guess I don't understand what the practical importance of moving it in the budget if you've already moved the personnel. Would maybe you could shed some light on that, if that's best remark.
For for the personnel side, it is really a matter of transferring those personnel and the costs associated with them into our line item. So that's really, that's really what we're doing here in terms of that item. But again, as 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 Mark indicated, you know, no budget impact to the agencies, you know, outside of that personnel movement. I hope that's helpful, Senator.
I appreciate that. Senator Austin?
Thank you very much. Hi, Commissioner. How are you?
Good afternoon, Senator.
Nice to see somebody from Eastern Connecticut.
You have today.
But I do have to say, I agree with Senator Lesser. The fact is, is that the administration has decided that the legislature doesn't have the right to weigh in on these things before they're done. That's true with HR. That was true with with the IT. It's, it's not, it's offensive. That's just it. It's just flat out offensive. And so I just want to say that on the HR consolidation, we hear from agencies, there hasn't been an agency that hasn't come before us that has that has said that the HR consolidation was something that worked out well for them. Not one, not one agency. We put in positions in the budget last year that haven't yet been filled. When we put in additional positions and to an agency, when we asked for them, where are they on those filled positions? And we put in full dollar amounts for the full year, we're being told that it's DAS that is holding them up. I'm not certain if it's DAS or OPM, but it is a fault of the consolidation of the human resources part of things, the fault of the of the executive branch for not filling those positions. And generally, I'm not opposed to us figuring out consolidation, but when consolidation doesn't work, it massively doesn't work. So we know that you added 12 human resources positions to deal with the issue of consolidation and not having enough staff. And that was done because a number of positions had have been cut. So my question is, how many HR positions have been cut from today to two years ago when it was done by by department?
Nick, are you able to answer that question?
He went dark.
He may have had a technical issue. Nick, are you?
Yeah, Michelle, I'm checking right now.
Okay, so Senator, while we're getting that data for you, I do want to offer just a few comments, knowing that your time is is short here. But relative to the consolidation of HR, we do through through both Nick and and now myself at the agency are meeting regularly with our commissioners to look at, you know, their reopenings, their refills that they need to fill. Obviously, looking at those on a priority basis. By and large, our experience is that while the HR centralization has taken some time to get used to for our agencies, I think particularly now, they're, the commissioners overall are seeing the benefits of of centralization. Certainly, it's an adjustment, but particularly when we look at the recruitment and the intensive work that the team called Talent Solutions is doing around recruitment, some really exciting opportunities around social media recruitment using a multitude of different platforms like LinkedIn, Handshake and some others. That work and that centralization allows us to recruit for a position for multiple agencies at once. We wouldn't have been able to do that before. And and again, I think it's important as well to remember, as I know you all do, that we do have very robust policies in place when it comes to the CBAC and collective bargaining agreements, as well as affirmative action policies, which are all important for us to follow. But oftentimes, that does, you know, take some time, you know, because they are added steps in the process for hiring, unlike, you know, private industry, which may not have those considerations. We do see with OPM, certainly on the the hiring process. And as you may know, we are going to sort of facilitate a dashboard of sorts in the next few weeks. I think it's very close to being finalized and that's going to show where certain positions are getting stuck between, you know, the agencies, DAS, OPM, or if if they're not stuck at all. And so I think that will help inform the process, you know, based on additional data and position onboarding even more. Because we really obviously want to solve these issues. And then lastly, what we're experiencing is with recruitment, similar to what we're seeing across the state, quite honestly, in the country, is that there are many positions that are just quite frankly challenging to hire for. Just last week, we were talking with Demus around many needs that they have for healthcare. And like hospitals, unlike other industry in healthcare, we're facing similar challenges recruiting for those positions. So we're working to be as creative as possible within the the construct of our agreements and our, you know, our our different mechanisms for classifications and pay benefits, et cetera.
So tell me, Michelle, why would an agency, if we have done consolidation of HR, why would an agency need to have a memorandum of understanding? If we have taken positions and pulled them all together, why then are we requiring this additional piece of work that is requiring an agency to do a memorandum of understanding, allowing you to participate in the hiring process?
So from my perspective, the MOU just helps level set the expectations of both DAS and the agency. It really just provides, you know, a standard of, you know, what each agency's roles and responsibilities are in the process, just to alleviate any confusion. And each MOU, whether it's under HR or under the IT optimization, may be tailored slightly differently based on an agency's needs. And so we think that the MOUs help to guide that process so that there's really no misunderstanding about the agency's role and then DAS's role in terms of providing support and working through a collaborative relationship.
Can you send us those copies of those MOUs and a list of the agencies that have not yet signed an MOU?
We certainly can, sure.
Nick, did you?
I think it's fair to say as well on the IT modernization front, Mark and his team are working with a few additional executive agencies to finalize those MOUs and to work through some additional points that would make the modernization effort workable for agencies. You know, they may have some questions. They have very specific networking or software issues. And so Mark and his team are working through those and they obviously want to make sure that the MOU was reflective of each agency's needs. So it's a very collaborative process and obviously, and also certainly complicated as well to determine, you know, based on an agency's particular function.
So I guess, you know, it's just more of a comment than anything else. We've been doing this for two years. We have agencies that don't have MOUs. We have agencies that just signed MOUs. And it's taken nine months, 10 months for even job descriptions and jobs available to get out through any platform whatsoever. So I just, you know, I appreciate this, but I know we're hiring 13 people more. And I don't know what the savings was. So that no one's been able to articulate to me what the savings were for the HR consolidation. My concern is that we're going to have the same problem with IT. And I'm not, I'm not really, you know, both Representative Walker and I were not convinced that we were ready for an HR consolidation. An executive order was passed, so there was clearly, everybody knew the legislature had to weigh in on that. And now we're just seeing the same thing all over again with IT. So I just want to point out that, again, if we really wanted to act in a collaborative fashion, we would involve people and not just ignore them. And and, you know, I think I've been very clear with the administration on every level. And you know, I love you dearly, but I'm just telling you that it feels, it feels like you care less what we would have to say. Not you personally, but the executive branch in general on on every level. So, but thank you for that. And then I'll turn it back to Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate your comments, Senator Austin. Just a quick question before on a on a non-IT consolidation related question. My understanding that at least formerly, I'm not sure if it's currently the case, that the commissioner of the AS was designated the chief operating officer of the state. Are there positions associated with that extra designation or is that really just an informal designation of DAS?
So good question. Nick, are you able to speak to the COO role in particular? And was that a specific, if that was a specific position, obviously, I knew that Josh had a specific role, shared role at DAS.
It was only a working title.
Got it. Representative Dayton, I see Representative Walker has, well, lots of people have their hands up, but Representative Dayton had her answer first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Gilmans, for coming before us today. Just wanted to follow on from my other colleagues that talked about the HR optimization or, yeah. Is it HR consolidation, sorry. I was very surprised this morning in my deep meetings that they were talking about their hiring took them over 90 days to get bring new staff on. And this has been a consistent message that we're hearing. I'm wondering, in terms of, you know, data collection and metrics, how is the agency planning on evaluating how the HR centralization recruitment is working? And how are we able to compare that to hiring practices in the past?
Nick, can I move that question to you? I know you have statistics around our hiring over time.
Right. So what what Representative, I mean, we we've testified on this before that historically, one major weakness of decentralized is that there were no metrics at all. Agencies anecdotally complained about the length of hiring, even even in the decentralized state. We had an era of calling people to take a written pencil and paper test at Rensselaer Field. We had, you know, pencil and paper job applications. We we had so many outdated practices practices just from a few years ago.
Right. I remember that. I was just wondering, what are you going to do going forward to ensure we have better transparency and better measurement tools in place to facilitate this? Because it doesn't sound like so far it it's working. And I I agree in principle with this, but I do have a little bit of concerns, especially when we have so many people retiring. The state can't afford to have gaps in service and gaps in knowledge transfer. And I'm worried that, you know, this is, you know, could be a penny wise, pound foolish sort of process that we're getting into. And I just want to make sure that we're giving everything we can to ensure that positions are being held and how we're going to be measuring that going forward.
So we previously testified that HR centralization has enabled us to pull expertise together and we have the resources where we're building a dashboard that will measure the filling of a position from end to end. That is in construction. We expect to have this here in the coming weeks so that we will be able to see the full lifecycle of a position.
Also, Representative, I want to add in that I mentioned earlier that we're on track to fill, you know, the the most jobs we've ever filled over time within this this year in particular. So I'm just looking at some additional information and we're on track to fill over 7,000 positions this fiscal year. And I believe to date, just alone through this fiscal year, we have filled over 4,000 positions. And that compares to fiscal year 2021 in full being about 5,500, fiscal year 2020 being about 5,900. So we're well on pace to exceeding that. Can provide additional information, you know, relative to that. But our overall, our workforce is very stable in terms of the levels. And, you know, just our February data showed 30,247 employees in in the workforce compared to November 2021 was 30,499, you know, and so on. Again, relatively stable at that 30,000 rate going back to 2017.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. I do think it would be very helpful for the agency to consider putting metrics in place, not just on a job by job, but maybe by agency by agency, by level by level, that you can, you know, slice and dice the data so that you can figure out, you know, where are the areas that we're having difficulty hiring? Is it agency or is it level or is it experience background? I think, you know, with all the initiatives that we have going, I think it would provide a lot of transparency and be able to support this committee in when we are looking at roles going forward. So I'm encouraging, would love to see what you all can do so that next year, when we have these discussions, and hopefully I'm here, that we can, we can continue to look at this. And I did want to say thank you for the IT optimization presentation. That was, that was very helpful. I'm going to listen to Representative Walker because I know she's thinking similar things that I'm thinking about. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Walker, follow by Representative Baker.
I'm going to let Representative Baker, because I'm coming for the second time, so in fairness to my my colleagues. Representative Baker, you go first and then I'll come right behind you.
Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. I'm not sure who can answer this question. We talk a lot about centralization and the movement of positions around. Will we be doing any transfer, moving around from building to building from this process?
Nick, would you, would you like to take that question?
Sure. Hi, Representative. So, so yes, we have moved or and or in the process of moving approximately 100 HR employees from various locations in the state to to centralize units at 450 Columbus. And they will either be working out of that office or teleworking, just dependent on their assignment.
Your office, was that again? Where was that? The building itself?
450 Columbus, Representative.
So is, so what's, what's, what's currently in that building now? That will be able to accommodate them?
Well, we have, we have a floor about the the equivalent of a floor of 450 Columbus, but it's it's a large complex, right? It's where DAS headquarters is. The majority of DAS, you have the Department of Education, Early Childhood, Department of Taxation, and a number of other agencies there in the complex.
So when, because I'm just trying to try to distinguish the, where, when we look at this line item, when you got rents and moves and it's, there's an increase in there, is that from the decentralization move?
Well, I I don't have it in front of me, Representative, but I'd imagine that there there, we do have, there's some construction costs. I think Noel is shaking his head at Noel, I don't know if he'd be able to help out here.
Yes, Representative Baker, that line, and I don't have it in front of me either, but there are costs associated with rearranging the floor to accommodate Nick's group. We have plenty of room at 450.
So, that, so that cost association will reflect on that line?
I have, I have to see the exact line, but I am confirming that there are costs associated with the move. Yeah.
Now, so to my question, my next question is, now, the, the building where the secretary is, the state was, was in, what is, what's the, what's the future of that, that particular building itself? Because it's, because it's currently empty, my understanding?
Which, which was the Secretary of State?
The old, the building they were in before.
30 Trinity Street.
Trinity Street, yep. So, we have a contract to sell those buildings.
Okay. So, in terms of maintaining it right now, do you have like a breakdown of the cost then? Because it's currently empty, is that right?
It's currently empty, but it's, it's, you know, as closed down as we can, which means the heat's turned down, the water's turned off. I think if I remember correctly, it was about 700,000 a year for both of those buildings.
Okay. So, it's currently, it's been out there posted as a, for sale, is that correct?
Yes, and, and we've, we've come, I'm pretty sure we have a signed contract. Yeah.
Okay.
It just takes time, they're doing their due diligence and, and we have to go through, the sale process is, is quite long. But we're moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all my questions at this time.
Representative Baker, Representative Walker, followed by Representative Harrison.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll keep my questions and I'll come back again. Okay, I want, first I want to, I'm sorry?
Are you sure? I, I'm, I'm curious what you want to know.
Okay. First, I want to start with HR. I, I pulled out my sheets from last year. I actually keep my sheets from each year so that I can sort of compare. And the HR consolidation, according to the governor, was 232 positions. And, and I heard you, Nick, say that it was about 100 positions. So, I'm confused because the amounts that we had in our, in our budget from last year was that. So, did we not take everybody that, that originally was planned for the HR consolidation?
Well, Representative, our, our organization is split into certain units that are physically centralized. And then half to slightly over half of our organization are in our HR business partner teams who are deployed at agencies. So, they've, those, those employees have never left physically where, where their location is.
Okay. All right. So, so the, the whole consolidation wasn't exactly a total consolidation. What it was, was you had everybody that did HR sort of isolated into one, one area. And they still provided the somewhat the same functions. But I'm sure they don't provide the same functions because if that were the case, then there would be no reason for us to do the consolidation. So, I mean, the, the, the positions and the opportunities and things like that had to. And I looked at your, your numbers, and thank you very much for giving us the numbers. It said that the job openings from 221 to 222 were about 3,400. And you have applications of about 6,300, is that correct?
That, Representative, our production has been substantial. I, I think, and I should have noted this earlier, is that our recruitment production is, it's a slightly different conversation than the act of physically filling in the positions. When, when you're looking at filling a position, you're looking at a lot of internal processes with hiring managers and leadership at agencies. You have the position approval review of OPM. Then you have our piece of recruitment. But then the selection piece back with hiring managers in agencies to and include background checks, equal opportunity affirmative action, reports and reviews. All of that combines together and, and the checking of references, all of that combines together to equate for this timeline of filling positions. I just, I want to clarify that it is not an exclusive DAS HR activity. Many hands are in that process, most of which are actually within the hiring agencies themselves. And we are there to support them.
So, so, okay. So, in, in saying that, so those hands are, are more than what they were before. And OPM now has, well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just paraphrasing what, what I thought I heard. So, OPM now has the sign off on all this. And in the past, OPM didn't have the sign off for, for jobs, is that?
No, no, Representative, really, this process that I just described here in a few words has largely remained unchanged. And the reason why it's unchanged is most of it is dictated by things that are beyond HR's immediate control. Whereas HR centralization could not have affected all of this. Agencies still have their leader review of position requests. That, that is controlled by agency leaders. OPM still requires of agencies to review position requests.
Okay.
Really, the thing that we changed in HR centralization is that we combined 20-plus recruiters into one unit so that we, they could get better at, at posting jobs. They could, for the first time ever, they've developed a functionality and the bandwidth to source and recruit candidates. And they've gotten better and more consistent at shortlisting candidates. But once we refer those candidates back to agencies, again, it's, it's, we are looking and, and subject to the, really the pace that a hiring manager and his agency wants to go in. And so, it's, that entire process where you are involving agencies, OPM, HR, hiring managers, equal opportunity, background checks, all of that has largely remained the same again, because those are required by things other than DAS. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, I want to ask, when you started choosing the, the membership from the agencies to go into the, the centralization of IT, was there a formula on how to determine how many people moved over from, from their agency or became another umbrella under your IT system that you used in figuring out who was coming from one agency to the other? No.
Nick, are you frozen? Nick, maybe.
No, he's, he's, he's shaking his head. I, I don't, I don't think so.
I, I'm sorry, Representative, I wasn't sure if that was an HR or an IT question.
Oh, no, no, this is an IT. I'm sorry, I moved over to IT because I went, I, I just, I just wanted to get some, I'm sorry. So, in making the IT consolidation, you have certain positions that you move from the agency to the IT consolidation. Was there a formula in, that you followed in doing that?
Michelle, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Representative. We, we selected everyone who was in an IT classification, whether it's management or represented. There were folks across three different unions that had roles that were defined as technology roles. And, and those were the individuals for, in the executive branch agency that we identified as participating in, in that scope.
Because I, I noticed like labor had 20 people moved over, but the dollar amount was only 38,000.
That, that was largely because over 80% of those individuals' funding comes from a US Department of Labor. And so, it's not reflected in the general fund. So, there's a, a much smaller percentage of general funding that goes along with that.
So, you were able to move federally funded employees into, into the, into that? Okay.
Well, the approach, the approach is that, you know, as, as the individuals will remain dedicated to serving those agencies. And so, they would continue to be funded from the sources. It, it happens the same whether it's transportation fund or other, other federal sources.
Because I know, like, like DES, DES had 34, but that was 6.9 million. So, I mean, it, it seemed to be sort of, and the one that was very interesting was, I think OPM had, had, OPM had no people, they, they moved nobody over into your IT, which I would, well, I, I, I thought that was, that was, that was interesting. And then you also have a list of agencies that you're doing MOUs with and division of, division of criminal justice, FOI, OPM, Office of Chief Medical Examiner and Office of State Ethics. None of them are participating in moving anything over, but yet they did MOUs. So, I'm curious, for them to do an MOU, they would have to have skin in the game in that regard. And so, I'm, I'm trying to understand, what is the MOU saying that they're committing to?
Those, those agencies that you referred to, and, and we look at those as out of scope, those have not signed, nor have we asked them to sign MOUs related to the IT optimization. It's possible that, you know, we've provided them some other kind of service in the past as the central IT organization. But none of those excluded agencies have been asked, nor have signed MOUs associated with the IT optimization.
They're, they're, they're listed on your, on your PowerPoint as people that were doing the MOU. So, you might want to look at that slide.
I will, I will definitely make sure that we look at that.
Yeah. So, the, I guess the, 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 the part that I'm looking at is trying to come up with an understanding of, you know, and listening to, oh, the higher ed, and then now looking at IT. Some of our agents, I mean, most of our agencies don't have services. We do billing for agencies, for nonprofits and things. DSS, DCF, Demus, DDS, all of them, we don't really have the frontline of, of people. We do billing. So, how is this going to process in a way that doesn't encumber the providers in receiving their funding? Because it's, it's now, and I, I understand that, that, you know, you're, you're, you're doing a uniformity in, in, in presentation for the agency so that they all are doing it the same way. But yet, some do Medicaid, some do direct services, some do grants. I mean, you have a plethora of ways of how we, we put money out into the community. And so, to me, that is not necessarily done by every agency. So, how do we make sure that that does not? I mean, we have enough complaints from our providers as it is in getting their reimbursements and things like that. This could cause a major ripple effect in getting billing and services out by putting them under another, because everybody doesn't do it that way.
Those, it, I, I believe if your question, Representative Walker, is related to the IT optimization, that the business ownership of those, those systems remains with the agencies. We, we, the technology supports of those, those systems themselves and the need to be responsive to the agency. And, and when something goes bump in the middle of the night, deploy people out to help, remain, you know, would, would, that would be supported by the technology group. What we fully expect is that the, the, the needs of thinking about this and delivering solutions together will, will continue to bring incremental streamlined improvements to those things so that the, the providers that are working across multiple different areas and have multiple different interfaces, hospitals working with multiple different agencies, businesses that have to touch multiple different agencies in order to open a business, that, that the technology optimization will streamline those. And that the, our ability to bring together security and technology will help keep our, the information that's in our care much, much safer than we're able to do in, in small individual buckets by buckets. Our, our, our technology world is changing rapidly around us. And we need to be responsive to, to utilize the new technology. The pandemic taught us that in, in spades. And I, and I think we did a, a decent job helping to respond to that. But, but there's a tremendous amount more that needs to be done. But technology doesn't exist if we're not meeting the needs of the business. But that's the only reason to serve in that. And that's how we've gone about the process in our discussions with agencies.
And just to piggyback off that, if I may for a moment, Representative, you know, just to, just to be clear, that the business office functions in our executive agencies are still independent and housed within those agencies. So, again, just want to distinguish between the IT teams within agencies versus the financial or business operations. So, those are staying independent and within the executive agencies at this point.
Okay. I, I, I guess, I guess my, my concern is we're doing, we're doing a major shakeup right after doing another, a major shakeup with HR. And, you know, and, and we, we keep referring it to as a business plan. But the thing that we have to realize, and this is very true, we're not a business, we're government. We're a government agency. And government agencies cannot fail. Businesses can fail, but government agencies cannot fail because you fail and you fail the state and you fail the people. So, as we roll out these, these, these centralizations, I don't think we're taking into effect what's going on on the other side. I would feel a lot more comfortable if we did it in phases. I'd feel a lot better if we were doing it in a way that, that would make us secure as we, we take each step, as opposed to just having it happen. And I would point out also that moving $73 million into an agency from other agencies is a major financial change in our process. And when we have that type of money, it has to be voted on and approved by the General Assembly, not by the executive office. It has to be done by the General Assembly. So, I think that we're going to have to have a little bit more conversation about this because we all are hearing very big concerns. And I, you may not hear them, and, and I can understand that. But we're hearing concerns on just the HR consolidation. And now the fear of the, the, the IT optimization or centralization, whichever you want to, to call it, terrorizes a lot of agencies and how they serve their, their nonprofit communities. So, I, I look forward to continuing conversations about this. But I think as legislators, we want to make sure that we do not circumvent our authority in this process at all, because we are the ones that have to go out there and hear it from the people. So, I look forward to having more conversations with you and GGB. And I'm sure that the chairs are going to have just as much to ask about that. So, I thank you for your answers. And I, I really, I really, I'm, I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm trying to protect us from a tsunami that can destroy a lot of businesses in this state. Those are the businesses that could be hurt. This is not a business, we're a government. So, I just want to point that out. Thank you so much for your answers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Walker. Representative Harrison, thank you for hanging there. You're up.
I have two questions. So, one is you talked about the approximately 100 employees are being moved in this consolidation and that some of them will be working remotely. Can you expand on that, please?
Sure. Thanks, Michelle. So, our centralized units are, we, we chose to centralize certain HR operations for common characteristics of being not, not really endemic to any one agency. It's a process, whether workers' compensation, leaves administration, shortlisting, recruitment, for example. And that, that work, we've standardized and we've scaled across the executive branch. That work is largely heads-down type of analytical work and processing work. That work is largely heads-down type of analytical work and processing work in, in many respects. And so it lends itself nicely to telework. Our HR employees will be teleworking under, um, the same program that's afforded to our other state employees. Coupled with that is that this centralization effort has allowed us to relook our footprint in the office. It's enabled us to shrink our foot, footprint a little bit. We're, as, as Noel explained, we're rearranging our office so that it's designed more for our centralized structure and, and our teams. And, uh, in, in many respects, we'll be sharing floor space amongst those teams. And when we're not there, we'll be teleworking and able to, we've been teleworking through the pandemic and during this construction phase. And, and again, we would rely on our statistics that, uh, much is being produced by these teams.
So I appreciate that answer. Thank you. So of those one hundred, um, how many do you anticipate will be doing that? And I, and I understand consolidation, and I understand office real estate, you know, costs us money, but, just looking for some information.
Sure, Representative. Out of those hundred, all, all one hundred will be working in the type of condition that I just described. We have about another hundred and fifty HR employees that will remain, uh, deployed to, uh, inside our various state agencies, uh, you know, throughout Hartford, greater Hartford area, and in some cases elsewhere, such as Middletown. So it is quite a mixture. We, we, it's really, like, it's a hybrid model in, in some respects where we have centralized teams. But then we also have teams deployed, uh, throughout our agencies.
Um, thank you for that. My second question, um, in listening to some testimony on a different committee today, they talked about this hiring and, you know, the length of time it takes and their frustration, which I, I believe Senator Austin e- equally expressed. But one of the, one of the things they brought up is sometimes in the process of interviewing candidates, you find the perfect candidate for a different open position. And I ha, you know, have been involved in hiring with, you know, the same government and fairness. But what, if anything, can we do perhaps to expedite some of that so that they can get some of these positions filled quicker?
Sure, Representative. Well, uh, i- if I could maybe just start with, one of the reasons why our process isn't as fast as anyone would like is that it's highly, high-
I think you're frozen.
Um, a civil service system.
Yeah.
We have laws, we have regulations, we have a plethora of collective bargaining agreement provisions that all control us to handle much of this activity in a particular way that is geared and intended to be trans fair, transparent, predictable, things of that nature. So I, I thank you for, for acknowledging that. Because I think that's forgotten sometimes, is that, you know, we, we are not a startup. All right, I mean, to, for, you know, to quote Representative Walker, I mean, we, we are a government, and we have to run a system here. We are actively working on creating hiring pools, comma, where we can. Because in some of the very places that we would like to do this kind of activity, there is expressed contract language that prevents us from doing so. And that, that is the major struggle, is again, we have heavy, heavy regulation. A lot of it is by virtue of collective bargaining agreement language that we would literally be unable to, um, to do exactly what you described, even when we would like, even when the hiring manager in the agency would like. It's just not, it's contractually not possible. So, you know, that is something that we work often with our colleagues at the Office of Labor Relations on, and it's something that is subject to negotiations. So I, I think that's the best way I can describe it, is we're, we're acutely aware of, um, that sort of practice, and we do practice it in spots where we can contractually. But, but unfortunately, many of the workplaces that would be tremendous for this, um, were prevented from doing so.
So thank you for that answer, and I think it was good to hear you express that. You know, that was, of course, when I heard that, my, you know, my immediate thought was exactly what you expressed. But at the same time, I think, um, they're equally expressing their frustration, and, um, so we somehow have to make sure that everybody's, you know, got the same information so that we can move forward correctly. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you, Representative Harrison, and I see we've got more cans up and, uh, don't mean to monopolize the, the agency for the entire afternoon, but we, we may do it. Just a real quick follow-up on Representative Harrison's question. You know, I, I was thinking in particular of some concerns I have heard from the, the, uh, VOTEC school system about hiring delays. Does anybody on the call happen to know if there's specific contractual issues that would, you know, slow down or prevent expedited hiring there? I'm just thinking particularly in terms of state-run primary and secondary school systems. There you do see you're in competition with, with other government agencies and whatnot that, that have more nimble hiring practices. And it seems like we're losing a lot of, a lot of teachers there, and I just didn't know if you had anything to shed specific to that situation.
Thanks, Michelle. Senator, I, I'm not, um, specifically of, of what, aware of any contractual requirements that, that we are subject to that are dramatically different than what other school systems around the state are faced with. It, uh, it, again, they have contractual requirements, um, that, you know, so fortunately, our teachers are unclassified employees, so they, they do not have to follow a lot of the particular, uh, requirements within our State Personnel Act, but they are, you know, they're, they're bargaining employees. Certainly, there's policies within the agency to follow. It's undoubtedly as, um, at, you know, the process i- is somewhat similar in that there are numerous steps and, and approvals, um, in, in order to, to hire someone. I, I'm sorry, I can't speak much knowledge, much more knowledgeably a- as to how dramatically worse we are than any other, um, school system here in the state.
Yeah, and I, I don't know the, the details. I, I would defer to colleagues who may know more. I just, you know, I, I've just persistently heard, you know, concerns about the length of the hiring process, and I don't know, I, I don't mean to put that on DAS or OPM or anyone else, but it, it seems that it's, it's unusually cumbersome, and as a result, we lose people, uh, who, you know, been in the queue for six months, uh, looking for a, a job in the VOTEC system. But maybe that's a conversation for another day, and I don't want to move us way off topic. Representative Nathan for the second time.
It's for the second time, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was thinking, uh, after we, uh, my last question, we talked about the hiring and folks coming on in each department. Has there been? It seems to me that I, I'm just trying to reconcile it in my brain, because it seems like, from what I've, you know, anecdotally hearing from each of the agencies, you know, they, we've not seen hires come on in the last year. Does DAS have a schedule of all of the hires that are coming on? And has that been, um, provided to OFA where they've been able to kind of, um, prove that out in, in the budget sheets we have? I just kind of want to understand on a full basis. Um, I know we've received the retirements on a month-by-month basis, and likewise, you know, those were a little bit, different than what I seem to have remembered hearing from the agencies. So I'm just wondering, um, does DAS prepare anything like that, that you could, we could share with OFA to make sure everything kind of ticks and ties out, if you will, both in the retirement and in the hiring?
Well, well, Representative, the, 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 the physical hiring is really done by the agency. So statutorily, every agency head is the appointing authority. We really, what we, we can provide, I mean, there's reports that we can do in core that can show, uh, how many positions we are filling at any, for any particular duration that we want to report on. I mean, that's something that we can provide.
I, the Commissioner mentioned some numbers when I asked my last question, and that's when I kind of went away and started thinking about it, I was like, wow, that seems like a lot compared to what I'm hearing from the agencies. And so, um, what I'm kind of looking for is like an employee reconciliation, if you will, by agency. And I don't know if that's been done somewhere else, but I just would really like to get a better handle on, one, retirements, but two, um, the hires, to making sure that we are, um, all looking at the same data. Does that make sense? And, and obviously, you can't get that today, but, um, if, if we could do that just so that we'd understand as a committee, um, how this is looking on a agency-by-agency basis.
Yeah, yes, Representative. I mean, that, that's exactly what our dashboard project is. Um, and so that, that is something that, you know, we are looking forward to reporting on, because I, we hear anecdotes like this often too. And so that, that's why we really think that our dashboard will help bring facts to the conversation. It, it's because, I mean, oftentimes, what is brought to us is this co-mingling of, well, I'm unhappy with the speed of this hiring of a position, so I'm going to talk negatively now about HR centralization. And it, it's not like our HR centralization project has improved so many different processes. And, and so rather than talking anecdotally about the filling of a particular thing, we're very anxious to have this dashboard so that, again, we can, all of us can collectively look at the facts of a particular action.
And then just to piggyback on that, in terms of the retirements, we're working, you know, daily, uh, at this point with the Office of the State Comptroller, regarding the retirements, what agencies are, are losing, you know, X number of staff? What, uh, what number of staff have filed actual letters of intent versus, you know, eligible employees, um, that may file? Uh, and then we're working very closely, you know, uh, with the Comptroller's Office around the executive branch agencies, so that we can prepare, you know, not only to, uh, help those employees and facilitate their retirement, but then also on the, the, um, the flip side, uh, to get our DAS team mobilized to recruit and work with agencies ahead of those retirements, um, taking shape so that we can, uh, be ahead of that, um, you know, that individual leaving. And then, of course, we're also working with agencies where it may be appropriate for someone to work as a TWR after retirement, or where, you know, how, how better to fill, um, you know, the talent that's leaving our state, how better to, to fill that, that gap? So we're having, you know, that dialogue with all of our agencies, and we have, but particularly elevated now as we look to more eligible, uh, retirements coming up for April one and July one.
Okay, I think, um, maybe we can work with OFA to see what we can do for historical, um, information, and if somebody wants to reach out to me from OFA, I'm happy to kind of talk through what, what I'm thinking about that we could get for the committee. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, and thank you, Senator.
Hey, thank you, Representative. Other questions for members of the subcommittee? If not, thank you very much. And you're, it would be great to see you, Madam Commissioner, and, uh, please, uh, return to administering, uh, the state. So it's great to see everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Senator, and thank you to, uh, this committee. We look forward to continuing the work, and obviously, we'll follow up with some of the outstanding questions from today. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. I think we've got some folks from the Office of Policy and Management on. Secretary Beckham, are you, are, do you have all of your team here, or do you need a couple of minutes?
I believe they are here, or soon will be.
Uh, we, we'd asked a bunch of questions in the hearing, and I think OFA followed up with some questions as well. And I, before, before we kicked it over to questions, wanted to see if you had any, uh, any follow-ups that you were prepared to take on.
Uh, just, uh, hello to the committee. Uh, this is my first time in front of this committee, uh, in this capacity, and, uh, I'm happy to be here, happy to see all of you. I've been on the job about a week, and I've, but I'm blessed to have, uh, be accompanied today by the team at OPM who have, uh, plenty of knowledge and experience and can answer, uh, your questions. Or if we don't know the answer right away, we'll get back to you as soon as we can. We were able to provide you on Friday, I think, with written answers to all of your questions, to the extent that we were able to answer them, but we're happy to take further questions here today, so.
Great, thank, thank you, and, uh, congratulations, condolences on your appointment, uh, Secretary Beckham. And I will turn, see if members of the, uh, subcommittee have questions for you. Um, I imagine we had a lot of questions just of DAS about, uh, hiring, and I imagine if you were able to catch the tail ends of their questions, that people may, may have specific questions about that. But, uh, before I get into that, I, I see Representative Walker has her hand up, and I would be glad to defer to her.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, um, Mr. Beckham, great to see you. And now, I, I, I'm not being facetious, so your title is Secretary now, right?
I think we're going with Acting Secretary for the moment.
Okay, I just, I, I didn't, I don't, I want to make sure I got, get it right, but it's good to see you and, and welcome, welcome aboard, but you've been around for a little bit, so you've gone through these, the, the questions and the answers. So I went through the, the thing that you submitted to us, um, I guess, the seven? But, um, what, a couple of the, the, the issues are especially focused around the ARPA funds. And do we have an updated list on who has been paid and who has not?
Yes, ma'am. On Friday, you should have received, uh, a spreadsheet. It's about, it's two pages, I believe. It's pretty lengthy. It describes, uh, it has a state ID, uh, number, a SID, we call it, for the account. It's separated by agency, it's separated by the description of the line item. There's an indication as to whether or not it's been allotted, which means we've given it to, to the agency to spend. Uh, that means they would have given us an allocation plan, they would have worked through the issues about whether or not it was, um, allowable under the ARPA rules, and they would have worked through whatever issues they need for contracting, that sort of thing. If you don't see a, a number in the allotted column, it means that they're still working through some of those issues, whether it's a contract they need to conclude, uh, or, uh, another issue with the allocation plan that they need to give us. There's a, there's a column then about whether or not it's been encumbered, that is to say whether or not there's a, a contract that specifies they're going to be spending this money, and then there's a column for expenditures to date. And it's, uh, it accounts for all of the line items in last year's Appropriations Act.
Can you tell me how much money has not been, um, allotted yet? I guess that's the term I want.
Sure. Uh, so the last line, uh, the total allotted is three hundred fifty-nine million of six hundred fifty-six that was, uh, appropriated or allocated by, via the Appropriations Act last year. So it's about half.
So about half has gone out now? And the, the expectation is that the, those dollars will be out in the near month or so?
Well, it depends on the agency, depends on the program, depends on where they are in terms of, uh, their, uh, work on contracting for it, if that's what's called for. It depends on whether or not they've got a plan to us to responsibly allocate the money. We, we are sensitive to getting it out the door, but we're also sensitive to making sure that we're accounting for it. Uh, we're in an environment right now, as you can well appreciate, where that is something we have to be concerned with.
Absolutely. We, and we should, we, 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 we are very happy with that. So, um, the, okay, so I, I'm just going through the last one I had, had, um, had six hundred ninety-five million as the, the total, but this one had only a hundred and ninety-one. So you're saying that your sheet has given, is going to give me three hundred and some odd in it now?
Uh, my, my sheet has a total of six hundred fifty-six million authorized in last year's act, and of that, about three hundred fifty-nine million has been allotted.
Okay, so we're going to have to compare our, uh, three hundred fifty-nine. We, um, I guess we'll have to compare the notes, because that, that means that there's fifty million missing in there somewhere. 359. We, I guess we'll have to compare the notes because that that means that there's 50 million missing in there somewhere. So we have to find out where that is. Okay. And for as far as carryforwards, did you identify those for us?
The carryforwards are in a different list.
Did you give, did you, did you provide us with that?
Paul, I think, well, the carryforwards in OPM are listed in the governor's budget. There are three primary ones, I believe. The interim staff necessary for implementing the infrastructure bill. There's a study of secure facilities to address address youthful offenders. And there's some funding for neglected cemeteries. Those are the carryforward items, major carryforward items in OPM.
So I I want, I guess I want to know, the carryforwards that we had last year, were all of those honored or were some of them honored and they were carried forward again?
Sir, Representative Walker, good afternoon, Paul Potomianos from OPM.
No, is that your name? I did not know that. How are you? It's good to see you.
Good to see you as well, for members of the subcommittee who are not familiar with me. We have, we weren't asked specifically to provide for today an update on the carryforwards, but I will tell you that all of the carryforward funding was allotted to agencies. That's correct. The the carryforwards that were approved as part of the enacted budget last session, all that funding has been allotted to agencies. I would not have off the top of my head a status of each of the items for you, but that is something, if you're interested, we could always try to put that together.
I would like that. We would like that because we're we're trying to figure out where we are in in the things that we had in the budget from last year. And I guess the other one would be the lapses that we had that we also that we budgeted for in the budget for last year. Where are we with those as far as being paid out from this past year? Were they all?
Representative, I'm not sure I understand the question. You're talking about the holdbacks that were in place to implement the budget. I think the vast majority of those were were related to state agency operational expenditures, I think primarily personal services. There might have been a few other expenses related holdbacks. But those were all, in fact, they're captured in the back of the OFA budget book that was published in October. So several of those have been released in the interim to help deal with the various agency funding issues of one sort or another. But by and large, those lapses are, I'll say intact, and we're, we've been maintaining them to achieve the budgeted level of savings that was anticipated last session.
Okay, okay. All right, then we'll we'll have to.
Certainly happy to follow up on any individual ones if you have an interest in in a specific holdback.
Yeah, there were, there were a few that we we had. Especially, well, I'll look at the list. I'm sure as a committee will be very interested in going through that because we worked hard on that budget last year, as we all did. And having them be paid out is very important to us because that was part of our, what we had voted for in the last session. So we're going to have to go through and make sure that those things are done. And then maybe we have to come back and and have a continuous conversation about that because that's really going to affect a lot of us in understanding where we are and how we're going to go forward this year. So with that, I turn it over to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Walker. And I see my co-chair, Representative Baker, and Senator Austin both have their hands up. And you can't make me pick between the two. I don't know who would like to go first, Representative Baker. I don't, did you have a?
I'll go to Representative Baker.
Sure, Senator. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm not sure, I'm commission acting, I'm not sure who will be the answer. This question, you respond to back in regards to Project Longevity and in some of the questions that were asked and as we would, Senator Walker, Representative Walker was talking about holdbacks. I I noticed that there was a holdbacks and lapses on the monies that were allocated to Waterbury. Can you elaborate a little bit of that? Have those funds been released yet? Or what's the would be the timeframe or when they will be released?
I think Undersecretary Pelka and our Criminal Justice Division is online for Project Longevity. I know that the Waterbury line item was put in at a time when there was not a program for Waterbury. So I think they have done some efforts there, made some efforts there, and and we expect that to go forward in the future. Undersecretary Pelkup can give you more detail there.
Yes, sir. And Representative Baker, the Acting Secretary is right. There was legislation enacted last year that added Waterbury to the Project Longevity sites to be operational. So for fiscal year 2022, the funds have been released for Waterbury. The site is is operational. A project manager has been hired. And the the Waterbury lapses will not appear in the 2022. That's only in the prior years.
Now, just to elaborate a little bit on it, but below that, there's like another lapse and there's some some monies and extra. What are those particular laps, other lapses under the Waterbury line item?
Representative Baker, the laps that you see below the Waterbury laps are funds that were not expended during that fiscal year. Either because the funds were awarded to to the site but not expended, or the cash was actually allocated to the sites but were not spent. Either way, the funds were returned or remained within OPM because they were not expended. The the lapse, aside from Waterbury, is just approximately $40,000 in fiscal 2019 and fiscal 2021. The lapse was higher for fiscal 2020. And that was due in part to the difficulty impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Central to the Project Longevity work are call-ins to our large indoor gatherings where clients meet with moral voices of the community and other participants. Those could not be held. There was also some individualized outreach that could not be held. The community events and gatherings could not be held, and there were some gaps in personnel. So the lapse increased in 2020 but went down in 2021. We would expect 2022 to look the same or better than 2021, keeping the lapse low or nonexistent, sir.
Thank you for that explanation. And for a second question is, when you, when you, when you have funds that are being expanded outside of the actual awarding funds and then and then funds that are being returned, can you can you elaborate on on a little bit of that? The extended funds would be example of that.
Yes, sir. Representative Baker, at the beginning of a new fiscal year, OPM develops grant award agreements which with the sites. Because the state funding is the provides most of the funding to the sites, it's quite urgent that those grant awards be approved on time to avoid any interruption and compensation for the personnel doing the vital work for Project Longevity. Therefore, after the new fiscal year is underway, about 25% of the total award is granted to the sites so they can begin operating. Requests for additional funding is then submitted to OPM, and those funds would then be allocated to the sites for expenditure. OPM receives routine reports from the sites regarding how the funds are re-expended and and other documentation along the way. We have a list of approved expenses, expenses that, you know, might require some, you know, review before they are approved. But our our effort at OPM is to enable the projects to move forward as swiftly as possible, knowing just the the importance of timing and reaching clients.
Monies will be deducted from the from the awarded amount. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, sir. Were we asking about, was?
Yes, the extended funds will actually, once the program, the money is actually in place, those money that extended funds will be deducted for awarded amount.
Yes, that, yes, sir. That is correct, Representative Baker. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that, that answer. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative, Senator Austin.
Are you ready for me, Mr. Chair?
Always.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. And one of my questions is we did the carryforwards for a year, but a lot of them, even if they've been allocated, have not been spent. So do we just carry it forward another year in your, in your estimation?
If, this is Paul Potomianos again. Let me answer that in a generic way. So in some cases, the carryforwards in section, if I recall, 308 of the Implementer Bill. In some cases, the language says the month, the funds carry forward for FY22 and FY23. I think we'd have to look at the specific items. There may be a couple of places where the language is specific to 22 only.
So I would check into the Native American grants and the fire department grants that happened. Because I know that both of them in working with their respective departments that they are handling, did not finish expending the dollars. And I want to make sure that they get, are given the opportunity to expend those dollars. And relative, who, I don't know who this question goes to in this plethora of people that are here. But we have this convoluted hiring system. And the hiring system is that an agency says they need X person. And then OPM, my understanding is OPM approves it and then it goes to DAS. Could somebody please explain to me what is OPM's role in the hiring process of people? Because I don't know if I have it right at all.
That's Paul.
I'll I'll take a shot at this one, Senator. So the the pathway is that an agency, to the extent they want to establish new position or refill an existing position, they put in information in Core CT, which is our centralized system for doing HR transactions. DAS approves that refill. They look at is the classification correct for the duties that are being performed, et cetera. And then it comes to OPM for for review. And once OPM signs off on it, then the agency is free to move forward with filling that position. Doesn't prevent them from advertising a vacancy because they can always advertise a vacancy as an anticipated position, et cetera. They're not technically able to fill it until the position's been approved in Core CT.
Before you go any farther, Paul.
Sure.
I have a question right there. Who is advertising for the position? The agency or DAS?
The agencies are, the hiring agency is the agency that posts a notice to the public or to whomever it's trying to target to fill that vacancy.
So ju- just on that, that particular thing, when we talked to DAS just a little bit ago, they said they're the ones that are advertising. So that is.
All state agencies, Madam Chairman, Senator, use the Job Apps application, which is administered by DAS. It's run by them. It is their system, but it's the agencies, they're doing the posting. The agencies are taking the action to put the posting out there, but it's through a DAS facility.
So that's, just so you know, that's exactly the opposite of what DAS told us today. Just a little bit ago, that they're the ones that are posting the positions, that they they have MOUs that are signed by each agency and the agency is allowing DAS to post the positions, in particular because they're using social media. And they can then post for four or five positions at the same time. I just want to get it straight because I don't, I I think that we're all looking at this from a number of different lenses and each agency told us today, not just today, but over the last two weeks that we've been doing this, that it's taking them longer under the consolidated HR. Now, I'm paraphrasing because nobody says this exactly, but they're saying it takes them longer under the consolidated HR to get a position filled. And the whole point of doing the consolidated HR was to speed up the process. And so when we talked to DAS, DAS said they now have MOUs with every, with almost every agency. They're going to get the ones that they haven't completed the MOU on. I don't know why we had to do MOUs between agencies, but that's a different question. And that they are now posting for positions on LinkedIn, some something called Help Hands.
Right.
I'm not, you know, I'm not exactly familiar with all the HR tools that are out there, but they're the ones that are actually posting on all of those now. So I just, if somebody, and I don't need it today, Paul, but can somebody give me a flowchart of how we hire somebody in the state so that I finally understand it because I feel like I'm in a whack-a-mole situation that I get a different answer from different places. And I'm not criticizing anybody on this issue. I I want to know.
Senator, I do want to, I don't want to, hopefully I haven't said anything that's incorrect here. I want to qualify my response. DAS technically posts on behalf of the hiring agency. So if you're asking who physically posts the vacancy, it is the centralized HR staff who are assigned to help that client agency do its hiring. They're the ones who are using the Job App system that Secretary Beckham described, putting that notice out there to the public to say, here's an opportunity the within a particular agency for a particular job.
So if you could, just so that I can share this with my colleagues so we all understand the flowchart on that happens on a job posting, that would be very helped helpful as I'm eating a carrot. I apologize.
And I would offer too, Senator, that one of the things we try to do to assist with some of the concerns, I think that you've you've raised not only with DAS but with some of the agencies as you've talked to them in these subcommittee meetings, as we've moved over 110 distinct job classifications to what we call auto refill status, which means it completely bypasses OPM approval. So these are, these are the, you know, direct care 24/7 type positions. Some of the engineers and maintainers at DOT and such where we're having such difficulty in trying to attract people. We didn't want we're not to hold up on those. So we're trying to get those. Trying to give agencies a few more days of or to cut that hiring process by a few more days.
So can you send us over that 100, that list? That would be, okay.
Yeah, that was, I think, something you had requested in the past month or so. And I know I shared that with Neil Ayers from OFA, and we're happy to send that again to you. So it's over 110.
Yeah, I'll ask Neil for it. So that that's, if we could just sort of understand what's going on here because would that be a position like state trooper?
We did not put those on auto refill because they tend to hire those in classes. So as they need to refill a class, same thing with correction officers. As they hire a class, we just put through the approval for that class and they they move forward with it. These are things like nurses and doctors and engineers and maintainers and those sorts of positions.
Okay. All right. So I think I, I think I have that down to a point. And I heard Representative Walker ask the question relative to what's been spent on ARPA and what has not been spent and get that updated list. And what's been spent on carryforward and what's not been spent. We did not, apparently didn't ask for that, but we are. So we'll get that at some point.
We got that. And and we're trying to make it easy for you too on the ARPA. We've set it up in a way that OFA could easily pull the data for you from Core at any point in time that you care to have access to it. We also anticipate putting that information on our website and on the state open data portal with some frequency. Right now, we're looking at monthly. But it is available and we've set it up in Core in a way that OFA should relatively easily be able to to pull that for you if you if you desire it.
And we're looking to move the TRB over to the comptroller's office for administrative purposes only. One of the things that we want to get is we want to get the TRB on Core CT. Have you looked at that at all?
We have designee, I think, on the board, the TRB board, who might want to consider that. Mr. Messner is on the on the call. He's our representative on the TRB. I'm not particularly familiar with that proposal.
Hi, I am on the call. The question, I guess your question, Senator, is have we considered that? And we consider a lot of things. So we'd certainly be interested in talking to you about how that would work. I know that that was raised in a previous administration a few years ago. And there were some concerns, but we're happy to talk about that.
So we talked about that with TRB and they're interested in that. So they brought that to us. So we talked about that with TRB and they're interested in that. So they brought that to us. So it seems to me that they may be interested in it. I think it's better to have both pension systems in one area. So I'm not saying they get joined together. I'm saying that to use the same software, to have the same data, to the actuaries are the same for both SIRS and TIRS. So it makes sense to put that all together so that we're working off the same playing field.
The board is in need of updates to their information system at this point anyway. So it, it's certainly a good time to think about how best to do that.
We're told between $5 and $10 million to move it over to Core CT. So seems to me to make sense to do it now.
We'll take a look at it.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. And just a, a follow-up to one of Senator Austin's questions. I was wondering, just it is, and this dovetails with my questions for DAS earlier. Specifically concerned about some hiring delays for the, the Voc Tech school system, just because it overlaps with, you know, a lot of other school systems that, that are competing for many of the same staff. I, I, nothing in your answer indicated that Voc Tech staff or any, or teachers were covered by the, the, the refill provision that you talked about. Is, is that accurate? Was there on any? There's nothing in there that would automate that or expedite the hiring of, of teachers into that system?
For that question, I don't know. Holly Williams is on the call. Whether you have any information about this? Otherwise, we can, we're happy to follow up and, and provide something.
Hi, Senator Lester. Holly Williams. I think I interpret your question to be, are Voc Tech teachers in our automatic refill approval stream where they circumvent the formal, you know, chain of approval? And Voc Tech teachers still come through the formal approval process through DAS and then OPM? So they're not on an automatic refill schedule?
Okay. Thank you, Holly. And is that something that the department has considered? I, I know you said you consider lots of things, but.
So we did, we did discuss this at length and given the fact that the CTECs are moving towards independence, we've kept them in the current approval structure as we work kind of collaboratively to stand them up as an autonomous agency.
Okay. Other questions from members of the subcommittee? All right. I think the Office of Policy Management has gotten off fairly light today, unscathed. Good to see all of you and I'm sure we will be following up. I would just ask if Neil, is Neil on? If he could, if, whoever at OPM has that, OPM, OFA has that, that document that was referenced, I, I would be interested in seeing it too. So I, as I imagine other members of the, of the subcommittee, if that could be distributed to all the subcommittee members, I think that would be helpful. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I hope you're not going easy on me just because it's my first time.
Oh, it's not really your first time. It's just your first time as Acting Secretary.
Well, thank you.
The only reason we're going easy on you.
All right. I've been warned.
You, you get, you get a freebie and then the next time we'll rip you apart, but not, not, not today.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. And congrats and good to see everybody.
All right. Off we go.
Thank you.
Are we all done now?
That was it.
That was it? Very good.
A half hour ahead of schedule.
Bye, guys.
We're efficient. Good to see you, Senator. Good to see you.